Okay, the meeting will come before, please join us in the place of retreat.
..................
Okay, the first item is Supervisor Jake Crozier has joined us remotely and clearly given some information.
Yes, indeed, Mr. Chairman. James Crozier, I am at thirty-three Pier Point, New Bern, North Carolina, on a plane trip.
All right, very good. So tonight we have a pair of public hearings. Public hearing number one is the proposed tax rates. We will be receiving comments on the tax rates for accounting year 2023, which are proposed in support of the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget. Action will be deferred until the regular meeting on April twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three, of course, because that's how the state law is written, you know, public hearing and then hold off basically. Tonight, we're going to give each speaker three minutes, and there will be a timer on the screen there so people will know what is happening here time-wise. I will open the public hearing. Allison, if you call her first.
Would you like a presentation from Glenda, ahead of second public comment, if you'd...
Sure, that would be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Deputy County Administrator Linda Braden.
I'll reset the public hearing.
We'll give a brief overview of the current proposed tax rates and the proposed taxes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the proposed rates for FY24 are showing on the screens since our last meeting on March twenty-eighth. There have been a few changes. You can see that now the real estate rate is proposed with no increase for the current year, and that the personal property rate on vehicles, auto trucks and motorcycles, is proposed at three dollars and eighty-five cents per hundred. That's the rate that will generate similar amount of revenue based on the reduction in values that we perceive for NADA. And none of the other rates have changed. We have one new category for computer equipment and a data center, but those are the only changes.
Okay, any questions for members? Any comments? All right?
If you want to go ahead and go through the budget, go on in and get the presentation not having to have it.
Okay, yeah.
Since they're all related.
All right, so I have a brief presentation tonight of the budget. First of all, just reminding everybody that in developing this budget, we continue to uphold Board of Supervisors strategic vision. We also adhere to the philosophy of appropriately scaled local government services. We're continuing to apply the Board of Supervisors top to financial policies, which includes a preference for organic revenue growth, and we continue to try to balance competing priorities. I'm next, and I think the key budget problem as far as the tax rates, again, the real estate rate is proposed to stay the same at seventy-five cents per hundred, and that's the combined rate is the regular real estate rate and the fire and that's the levy tax. After two consecutive years of rapid growth in vehicle values, we've seen a fifteen percent reduction in values for NADA, so to stabilize the revenue, a rate of three eighty-five is proposed. Also in this budget, we're continuing operational and capital funding for the volunteer fire departments, and we've adjusted our apparatus replacement schedule to include county funding for rescue engines rather than the regular fire engines as previously proposed. We're also proposing to adjust the staffing level, particularly in DSS and facility maintenance, and that's to just continue to provide our current level of service. We continue to support the evolution of the Orange County Broadband Authority. We're also funding inflationary and market adjustments to the class and compensation program, and we've adjusted some collected fees in order to recover proper costs and just align with the market. The total new estimated tax revenue for all categories of collection has increased by nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Most of that is in the general fund at eight hundred and forty thousand and a hundred and thirty-nine in the fire and that's one. One penny on the tax rate for FY24 equals about four hundred and eighty-one thousand in revenue. As approved at our last meeting, the cigarette tax rate was going from twelve cents a pack to forty cents per pack, and that generates about four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in additional revenue. The board also voted to adjust the net worth threshold for the elderly and handicapped real estate exemption. That's going from a hundred and twenty thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand, so hopefully more people will be able to take advantage of that. The next slide just shows our consolidated budget for comparison from FY23 to FY24. You can see that the bottom line there, the increase is nine point eight percent. However, you have to keep in mind that that includes about seven point one million and more capital than the previous year, so it's a little inflated. This chart shows where the money comes from, and this is the complete budget, includes the school funds and all county funds. You can see that property taxes fund thirty-six percent, state revenue is thirty-four percent, other local revenue, which is all the other local taxes like sales tax, meals, occupancy tax, and the cigarette tax is thirteen percent. And likewise, this chart shows where the money goes in the entire budget. You can see the vast majority is going toward the school funds at fifty-five percent. General fund is next at twenty-two percent, and then in comparison, all the other county funds are relatively small. This chart shows the local spending, so this takes out all the state and federal revenue, but it shows you where the local dollars are going in terms of function. You can see that our main areas of expenditure are in education and public safety. This chart shows you a status of our general fund balance, and the highlighted number at the bottom there is three point seven million. That's what we estimate is available for appropriation in this budget, and as proposed, we would be using two point four million of that. That compares to the current year's budget when we appropriated three million, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. However, three million of that was a one-time capital contribution for fiber link. This chart shows our capital project expenditures comparing the two years, and just shows you which funds are involved in funding those capital projects. And the next slide just shows our debt service in the same manner, comparing the current year to last year, and you can see there in the far right bottom corner, we have an increase in debt service for FY24 of about one million thirteen thousand. And this last chart just shows how we're doing in terms of the board's adopted financial policy when it comes to funding capital and the debt that also funds capital projects. The board adopted a policy in FY14 with a minimum amount of investment that we would continue to fund, and so every year we go through this process of making sure that we're in compliance with that policy. The FY24 budget reflects a combined investment in capital and the associated debt of thirteen point four million, and that's two point eight over that threshold that the board set for us, so we are in compliance. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Linda. Any questions for members?
How does our general fund balance compare to this year's budget? It was six thirty in the last year.
Right, you can actually see that on that chart, because on the chart, I start with the number from last year for last June thirtieth from the audited financial statements. And so, of course, since then, we've done some budget amendments and all kinds of things that affect that. This year, we did capital contribution for fiber link, so that was a big use of fund balance, three million dollars in one shot. And so, they are all listed there on that slide. I think we have a total of about seven million now appropriated in the current year's budget, so chances are we will end this year using at least some of that, that all depends on, you know, how our revenues come in and also how the expenditures, how much we're able to save.
So it seems to say a reduction in that general fund balance compared to last year, we're going to keep the taxes as low as possible, and if we're lucky to do that, fund that.
Any other questions for members? All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll do our public hearings. The first public hearing, we will do two of them. We will have the tax rate public hearing and then the proposed budget public hearing. You can sign up for both or one of the other. So we will do the proposed tax rates first. Allison, do we have speakers sign up? Steve?
Not for the tax rate public hearing.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing and close the public hearing for the tax rate. Anyone here to make a motion?
I would so move to adopt the proposed tax rate. I'll come.
I'm getting, I'm, I'm in a terrible, terrible hurry tonight for some reason. I need to make a shift. We're doing the public hearing, we're not voting tonight. I'm sorry, Taylor, it's a trick question.
Yeah. No problem, sorry.
Next, we will go to the proposed budget public hearing. Allison, do we have people sign up? Is that...
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we currently have twenty-three speakers standing up.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing, please tell us first.
First speaker is Jennifer Heinz. You could please state your address and any information for the record.
Yeah, great, thank you. Let me speak first. Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Jennifer Heinz, I live at two oh nine Freedom Road in Lucas Grove. There are two items that I'd like to speak to about tonight. First, I'm here to ask you to restore your annual funding for the Art Center in Orange. I'm aware of your vote in January to return forty-five hundred dollars in state grant funding intended for the Art Center. Thank you to Supervisor Frank for voting against that action. I guess this was punishment for the Art Center scheduling a workshop on costume and weave design by a local track performer. That event was canceled, your major point, but to now defund the Art Center in this fiscal year in a budget of a hundred and forty-three million with balance, you can find forty-five hundred dollars for our nonprofit Art Center after years of support. If this is your decision, we are owed an explanation. The Art Center is a cultural center in the county, and we're very lucky to have it. Last weekend, they hosted the opening for the Young Visions Art Show for our students. In September, my art group from Lake of the Woods will have an exhibit there. There are classes for all ages and a variety of media, year-round, and much more. The arts bring people together in creative pursuits, and we need more of that, not less. I urge you to add back their funding. Second, and actually, I guess this goes to the public hearing that you just closed, but I'll throw it in, I'd like to address the addition of the new tax classification in the budget titled Computer Equipment Equipment Full Use in a Data Center with an associated property tax rate of a dollar twenty-five per hundred dollars of assessed value. Given that we don't currently have any data centers in Orange County, but they are part of the Wilderness Crossing proposal, I guess we have to presume that this is a signal to the Wilderness Crossing developer and the companies with whom we've been holding discussions under your nondisclosure agreements, that you intend to offer below average property tax rate to interstate companies. By comparison, Falkir's rate is three dollars and forty-five cents. Loudoun County rate is four fifteen, Fairfax four fifty-seven, and Stafford is five forty-nine. Prince William is lower at one sixty-five, but they're proposing to increase it to two fifteen, because as one supervisor stated, data centers have created a lot of problems the board have been dealing with. I think she may need lawsuits. We'll talk more about the problems with Wilderness Crossing next week, but I'm wondering if you've asked the small business owners in Orange County how they feel about paying two twenty for one hundred of the set's value on their computers while the data centers will only pay a dollar twenty-five. If you do decide to sell us out to the developers, at least charge them the going rate, and certainly more than you're charging our small local business owners. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Paige Sullenberger.
Paige Sullenberger, I live at one five five Madison Street in Orange County. In full disclosure, I'm a former member of the board at Art Center in Orange. I've been a resident of Orange for more than fifty years. My husband and I chose Orange as we wanted a small-town rural life for our family. I have not been disappointed in that choice until this beginning. I believe that the future of Orange lives in the quality of life for its residents. Some of the many aspects of that quality are the welcoming and acceptance of new folks to our community, the proliferation of libraries and associated events, fine restaurants, a long-established community theater, and almost three decades of programming for the community by the Art Center in Orange. All of us have benefited in some way from their efforts to engage all our citizens in appreciation, instruction, and exposure to contemporary art. The Center aims to serve all members of our community with free exhibits, activities, and workshops. The Center secured matching gift for these activities from the Virginia Commission for the Arts beginning in 2012, and we are most appreciative that that matching grant has been met by the board since 2012. I can think of no better use for our dollars than support and supportive of this fine community asset. It belongs in the county budget, where it has received support for so many years. Please continue this investment in the future of our community. It is the right thing to do.
My name's Zed Harvey, I live at one zero zero seven eight Jacksonville Road in Summersville. I'm the president of the Art Center in Orange and have been on the board since 2002. The mission of the Art Center in Orange is to increase the quality of life in our community by promoting and appreciation of fine contemporary arts and diverse styles and ideologies. This is accomplished by providing reform to promote artistic excellence, scholarship, and education, a venue for artists and artisans to work, teach, exhibit, and sell work, a place for the community to learn skills and to participate as well as enjoy the arts. Our mission has never changed. Over the almost three decades we've been part of this community, we've offered thousands of engaging classes and workshops for all age groups, free art exhibits, fun art camps for children, festive holiday celebrations, and so much more. We've worked with young children in the Head Start Program, senior citizens at Old Village, and all ages in between. Yes, our work in the community includes fine art instruction, but we also provide a space for community members to come together, engage creatively, or just be. For a number of years, the Art Center in Orange was the only thing open on the ministry. Our art reference library office, we call it T and Y Bar, whenever we're open. Our studio spaces are available for artists anytime they're using a class on the board. The community garden is in the woods, and we continue to be an integral part of this community. We ask you to return the four thousand five hundred dollars to the Art Center in this budget. Don't let one workshop that never happened overshadow the thousands of contributions the Art Center does to help make Orange such a great place to live. Thank you.
Hello, I am Anna Pillow. My address is three ninety-one Piedmont Street in Orange, Virginia. I am the executive director of the Art Center in Orange. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. I remember flipping through the bios of the artists, teaching classes at the Art Center in Orange when I was fifteen. My grandmother had signed me up for a ceramics class, and I was excited for the first session. At the time, the facility did not have the ceramic studio we have now, it didn't have reverse of the pottery wheels, and so that was a little bit of an issue for me because I'm left-handed. I ended up using an old stone kick wheel, and by the end of the class, I not only had a fine selection of lumpy ceramics only a mother could love and a really great workout regimen, but also a new creative skill. I kept at it, and trips home from college became deliveries of new ceramic pieces for the Art Center shop. When I went abroad for my masters, I would still get emails from the Art Center letting me know that they had given my mom the check for my latest sales. Three generations of my family have participated in the Art Center's programs, just as I have. There are countless families in Orange County that can say the same. For twenty-six years, the Art Center in Orange has encouraged creativity, supported artists of all kinds, and nurtured community connections in Orange County. It was founded by Locals in nineteen ninety-seven, and in 2001, a large-scale mural project created and implemented by the community prompted local businessman and former mayor Bob Moran to generously give the organization a home on Main Street in the town of Orange. This project created the Gateway mural on Route Twenty and was a collaborative effort by artists, community volunteers, and the town. Our organization has a responsibility to look to the past so that Orange may have a viable future. We have an obligation to do this with the community, and we have done this through programming, murals, workshops, and a host of other projects. Just last week, over a hundred people came out to enjoy the annual art exhibition by Orange County schoolchildren, some of whom were seeing their artwork in a gallery for the very first time and hopefully not the last. My board of directors provided treats, my team worked hard on a painting project, and I painted faces for free. People creating, painting, gathering, and enjoying their community at the Art Center is part of Orange County and has been for decades. Our commitment is to our mission and to ensuring that there is always something for everyone in our community, and on behalf of from-hers, come-hers, and everyone in between, I ask you to return county funding to the Art Center in Orange. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Charles Laughlin. I live at two oh eight West Main Street with my wife, Lana. Bought the house in 2010, so I'm more of a come here than a from here, so I just wanted to give some of my personal thoughts on the Art Center, what it's meant to be. We were attracted to Orange, although I bought the house there because I took a position at University of Virginia teaching Chinese literature, but we were attracted to Orange for the unique atmosphere of Main Street especially, the town and the county as a whole as an alternative to Charlottesville. We mainly keep for ourselves, we haven't, it took many years for us to work ourselves into the community somewhat, but the Art Center was instrumental in our beginning to feel a sense of belonging in the town of Orange. One thing that we noticed even before we stumbled across the Art Center was the proliferation of artistic talent in the county that could be viewed back when Langwell was still around. They used to feature work by local artists on the walls there, and I'd seen such things in nearby restaurants and cafes as well, but of course, you don't go to cafes and restaurants to view art, and you certainly can't take art classes there. Probably about ten years ago, I started taking, because as a, I myself was brought up in a community that had a lot of public and private support for the arts, music, and theater, and so this is part of why it's a priority for me. In wanting to get back into painting, I started taking an art class at the Center from Ed King, I think about ten years ago, and at the time, my wife, who had never painted before, because I was buying the painting materials and so forth, started coming to the classes with me, and then at home, we would paint together. Lana's a poet, and she actually just this month published her first collection of poetry that's translated into English, and the cover of the poetry anthology is a painting that she had painted during that time. Since then, of course, we found the Art Center in Orange to be a very welcoming space for all kinds of activities, including panels with artists like Veronica Jackson, local authors readings such as the recent one by Carrie Holliday and Charles Craven. And so, it's more than just a place to take art classes and display art, and in fact, I think it probably should be considered an essential service for our community, because art gives kids a sense of awe about the world and encourages all of us to look at things from different perspectives, so I would also encourage you to restore the funding for the Art Center in Orange. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker is Betsy Breitling.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board, and thank you for considering the heartfelt comments of the people here tonight. My name is Betsy Bradley, I live at 12139 Old Tobacco House Road, Montpelier. And I have served as a board member of the Arts Center in Orange for, we think, at least twelve years. Buzz Van Sanford and I proudly claim to be the oldest people on the board, and I would like to, first of all, reiterate what both Ed Harvey and Anna Pillow and many others will have and will and have said much more eloquently than I could, comments about the Arts Center and a lot of the Arts Center, but I also would like to add one personal point. In my time on the board at the Arts Center, there have been shows that I have absolutely loved, and there have been shows that I just wasn't as drawn to. But I knew that our Arts Center is there for the entire community, not just for me and my personal taste. That is the beauty of art. It serves the whole community. And thank God, ours is a rich and a diverse and endlessly interesting community, something that we should be able to embrace and enjoy and be proud of. Please let us continue to help our wonderful society express themselves by continuing to include us in your magic. Thank you. Sort of side note, is it possible to make these meetings later? Because a lot of people work till five, so just put them there.
Next speaker is Anna Walecki.
Good evening, I am Anna Milinski, 376 East Main Street, Orange, Virginia. I'm here to, in support of the Arts Center and asking for refunding the Arts Center for withheld funds. I feel like you don't see the human stories behind the Arts Center. You see just institution had a maybe not desirable program and truly it sounded capriciously, cancel it. I, my personal story is my granddaughter, she attended classes, art classes in, at the Arts Center once a month on the weekend, and I wouldn't see her as much if the classes were not there. Yeah, because most of the participants were small children, and most of the children didn't have the riches or the funding to do anything related to art. They couldn't pay any tickets, they couldn't pay any fees, they couldn't buy any art supplies. But they had such an exposure to different way of thinking, looking at life, at objects, at nature, that I would like you to really reconsider your decision, and I would go farther, because when I learned about your unfortunate decision, I investigated, well, then how much money are we talking about? And I was thinking that you are paying like minimum fifty thousand dollars, and then I discovered this nine, I couldn't believe it, that you would be canceling nine thousand dollars support for an organization that gave to the community decades, decades of service, work, beauty, then I please reconsider your decision, and I would vote for increasing the amount. Thank you.
Good evening, Laura Daniel, Williamsburg, Virginia. Honestly, while I have something written up, how in the world do I follow that? I truly hope that you, as you sit on that floor, take a minute and truly listen to how these lives of Orange County have been enhanced and enriched and made a difference because of the Arts Center. I am appalled once again that you guys are trying to take away funding from something that is benefiting and making Orange County better. I would urge you to think back, had any of you had worked on, taken a class, visited, have your grandchildren or your children had the work up there, have you had loved ones sell their artwork, or taken a painting class, or taken an exhibit, and just realize, like think back on that memory. Look at that smile of that grandkid or that kid. That is what matters. Art makes a difference in people's lives, and I am utterly appalled that once again you are withdrawing funding from the Arts Center. You've already slapped its wrist on a proposed workshop that it never held. Wasn't that enough? My other concern that I would like to talk to you about is in regards to the budget too, but it's in regards to the school budget. Superintendent Dr. Hornick stated that you guys are, it's 1.2 million dollars short of the budget? Can't you again find this? Find it a way to make a difference? Find, reinstate the funding for the Arts Center. Find a way to make up that 1.2 million dollars. We're talking about the lives of Orange County, we're talking about a way to make them better. And ultimately, this affects kids, the kids that are going to Monday grow up and take over your seats. Shouldn't we give them the best start? I really, I hope you dig down, and I hope you think, and I hope you reconsider, to really think about that, that these two items, the Arts Center and the school system, need you guys. Listen to the voices in front of you. Please do what's best. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Alan Maynor.
Hello, board supervisors. I come before you today to speak on the budget. Imagine that, I've sent you multiple emails, all of which have gone unanswered despite requesting a response. Maybe by coming here in person, you will listen to me, maybe not. At the school board meeting, it was mentioned that there is being a deficit in the local funding of the schools by about 1.2 million dollars. That's quite a bit. I then thought, maybe you just don't want to have the funds. And, but then on Monday's special meeting, the school board, it was stated that you were paying for the construction being done at the schools instead of them having to use the construction grant fund. That normally would sound awesome, but you're providing them with 1.2 million dollars less. I remember listening to you talk about CTE programs and how you thought they were important, but then you're providing them with 1.2 million dollars less. I did FOIA requests against you about CTE and read about how you support CTE, et cetera, but then you provide our school with 1.2 million dollars less. In our schools, we have many who have fallen behind for whatever reason. It doesn't really matter where you place the blame for students falling behind, especially when you provide schools, you guessed it, 1.2 million dollars less. You need to be invested heavily in our youth and their education. We need to get our children back on track and help them advance academically. Children are our future, and slicing the budget on their education, and you are slicing the budget on their education and their future. All of the programs and projects come at a price and will not succeed without appropriate funding. We need to be able to pay our teachers and staff appropriately, or we will lose more of them. Please fund our schools appropriately. Additionally, the Arts Center funding has been cut in this budget. I do not support this either. The Arts Center is a nonprofit organization that has done a lot of good and continues to do a lot of good in our community. I have written many letters asking you why you removed funding from the Arts Center, as well as officially why you returned the grant funding. Those emails have gone mostly unanswered, and those who answered voted against returning the funds. I will say thank you to Keith Marshall. He inadvertently answered the question at the school board meeting when he lost his cool and talked very loudly to another citizen and exclaimed to us, because of the workshop. And the workshop didn't happen. It is clear that we have a board who is retaliatory and will use their position to push their ideologies. It is clear that we have a board who doesn't make their, doesn't mind making Orange County a laughingstock on the internet, as seen on Reddit when the cutting of the funding was announced. If you think this makes you look good for election, it doesn't. It makes you look like a bunch of people who are pushing their own agendas and not allowing people to decide if they want to attend certain events or not. Thank you.
Next speaker is Gray Kenner.
Good afternoon, my name is Gray Kenner, I live on 148 Land and Lane in Orange. So my name is Gray, I'm here as a husband, a father, and an Orange County resident, and I'm speaking for a lot of people who cannot be here tonight. Firstly, I'd like to thank the board of supervisors for listening to their constituents, the residents of this county that have had reservations about the Arts Center and some of the decisions made. Over the past couple of years, the Arts Center in Orange has made certain decisions that contribute the values of many people who live in this community and on Orange, and that they have repeatedly demonstrated a lack of good judgment. The Arts Center is purports to serve the community here in Orange, but consistently seems to cater to certain interests and ideologies that are not widely held, or at worst demonstrates a certain kind of hostility to certain residents of this community. There are several examples of poor judgment that I can cite here, but let's address them as egregious. To remind you, recently, the Arts Center stopped bringing in a drag performer for a workshop centered around drag costumes, hair, and makeup. The event was open to young people, fifteen years and up, and would take place after school hours. And we've seen type, these types of events across the nation, and there is a legitimate fear among parents such as myself, and for good reason, that such activities promote the sexualization of children. Now, if the Arts Center and this board had done any vetting whatsoever, they would have found that the performer that they selected had exceptionally explicit content on their social media accounts along with violent pornographic images. This was not hard to find. Now, we don't need to debate the merits of drag performances here, but whether the event was subtly marketed to children, we don't know that. But the fact is, the Arts Center and its board recently has shown a stunning lack of judgment, and has, and seems to have little regard for some of the norms that we have, the majority of residents have in this community. Whether it was the mural project or this, or this workshop, the Arts Center in Orange County has dismissed the concerns of local citizens, offering said to run the friendly journalists, to activist groups, who in turn have dehumanized our community, and have turned Orange into a statewide spectacle. This is not how they treat one another, and this is not how you serve a community. So I see this as a stunning lack of judgment, and while the Art Center has done many good things for residents of this, of this county for many, many years, these recent events need to be addressed, and so I thank you for making this decision. I know it was a tough one, but I think that we need to consider all points of view here. I don't think that there's a unreasonable agenda to question the judgment that has been made, and I think many residents of this county would feel much more comfortable knowing that steps have been taken to address this rather than plain victim offense. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dr. Linda Hudson.
I'm Dr. Linda Hudson, pastor of St. Thomas Episcopal Church, 27072, in Orange, Virginia. And I'm here to recommend not only that you restore the budget to the Orange Arts Center, but you increase it substantially. I don't think you understand what you've done to some of the senior members in our community, that I do with on a regular basis, who depend on the diversity of that Arts Center. To help them stay engaged in life, with any of their family members on the dinner or whatever. Many of our children are now in art programs in college or graduated because of things that they give in our Arts Center. And it's not about judgment or any other thing, it's about diversity. It's about diversity, being exposed to as many different things as possible. If the Arts Center has a program you don't like, don't go. It's really simple. The best thing I saw was a pornographic exhibit. It was done by Lon Hunter, who was an army soldier in Vietnam. He served as a photojournalist, and he did a show with just his photographs that he took during Vietnam. It was so powerful, it was heartbreaking, it was renderable. If people were anti-war, anti-military, what if they complained, oh, it's bad judgment, let's close the Arts Center? That's what we're talking about. This is Orange County, the home of James Madison, my gosh! The father of the American Constitution and freedom of speech. What have we become with such a tolerance? I beg for Bob Moran, who put that Arts Center in this town, and he would be ashamed of him right now. I wish him would be, this intolerance and his unchristianity. As a Navy captain and Navy pilot, I spent twenty-seven years in my life, mostly fighting against the Soviet Union and communist authoritarian groupthink, where the only thing that we think, and that's the only way to think, and anything else, that is not acceptable. We see it right now in Russia. We should not see it here in Orange, the home of James Madison, my gosh! I think they should have had that program. I'm surprised they canceled it. I mean, if I was a young person, I want to go into makeup and art and maybe get an academy award in makeup on them. Who better to go see than somebody in drag? Lord knows, they've got the biggest challenge in the world in makeup. How much can you learn from them? That's the kind of programs you have. If you don't want to go to it, if it's not your values, don't go. But restore their money. There are so many people, children and seniors, who depend on their free programs to stay engaged in this community, and it matters a lot. It matters a lot. You're the inheritors of James Madison, my gosh!
Next speaker is KJ Potts.
Hello, members of the board, my name is KJ, and I'm a resident of Orange County, and I think it is, it's really disappointing that you guys took away the funds for the Arts Center, and you need to give the funds back to the, to them, because I've been there when the activities were free, and I've had a lot of fun. And now that you have to pay for it to do the activities, me and my dad can't go because it's too much money and we can't afford it, and so we need to give the funds back to the Arts Center, and thank you.
So, my name is Emily Potts, and I live in the town of Orange. I refuse to give you my address because I'm one of those that feel threatened by people because of my lifestyle, because of the way I am, as the person that I am. because of my lifestyle, because of the way I am, because of the person that I am. You took the money away from the Arts Center for a stupid reason. We came up and said, "Don't do this." We did it anyways. Now you're taking it out of the budget. You need to put it back. I've heard, maybe not today, but a few other times on social media about the fact that people are worried about the woke movement coming in from Orange County. I see right there that Orange County was established in seventeen thirty-four. There's been a lot of woke people that have come into this county since that time, starting with James Madison. If he wasn't, then we wouldn't be sitting here. I tell you, we have an awesome place in our, in the Arts Center. You just heard my kid. I won't say what she is, what they are, because I'm part of the woke community, and so are they. So, the pronouns are she and they.
Wrong, baby.
There you go. You guys talked about, again, the woke community, and I've heard something about the Wilderness Project. I'll tell you one thing, if you don't want the woke community in here, better not right now, because ninety percent of them leave, or come to New York City, and they are woke. That's something you need to think about. And my thing right now is just give the Arts Center the money, because they need it, and so are kids.
Next speaker is Pat Neighbors.
I come to speak in support of the Arts Center. We are very fortunate to have such a top-notch Arts Center in such a small community. They offer a wide variety of classes, reasonably priced, free to many, wide variety of presentations and workshops. Some of them appeal to me, some of them don't. Some of the exhibits appeal, some of them don't. And as Reverend Dr. Hutton said, "I just don't go if they don't appeal." It would never occur to me to come to the board and request that funding be removed from something that benefits the entire county. And you, as supervisors of the entire county, represent the entire county, not the people who come to you with special agendas, asking to have power withheld when they don't like offerings at the Arts Center. Defunding the Arts Center doesn't represent me, doesn't represent, I suspect, the majority of the county, the majority of the people here tonight. And I think that I will discuss the values that's been mentioned tonight and sexualizing children. Who is it that grooms children, and who is it that abuses children? If you check the court records, we know it's fathers and priests and scout leaders and coaches and teachers. The list unfortunately is very long. Who doesn't groom and abuse children or drag queens? I respectfully request that you restore the funding to the Arts Center that benefits so many people within the county that have been so eloquently expressed tonight. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Sarah Yeager.
I'm Sarah Yeager. My husband and I are raising our two young children on Piedmont Street in town. I grew up in Rattavann, where my family's lived since the eighteen hundreds. This is a beautiful corner of the world, and I know many wonderful people in this community, but I'm beginning to grow embarrassed with my hometown's notoriety and national press for bigoted and closed-minded views. For many years, our rural community has been contented to appear to be a conservative, white, Christian, heteronormative monoculture. It's time we finally acknowledge that diversity has always existed here, but has never been proudly celebrated. Younger generations of educated, globally-minded citizens are ready for change reflected of today's reality. We're becoming more cynically engaged to hold our officials accountable when they are not acting in accordance with the values they were elected to represent. We will not tolerate a mob boss hegemony mentality where you can withhold funding from groups you disagree with politically or culturally while padding the pockets of your friends and personal businesses. The public deserves answers. Why do you refuse to support freedom of artistic expression in nonprofit organizations that bring valuable tours and revenue to this town, funding their very own budget? You are shooting yourselves in the foot to spite those you disagree with, and you will not be remembered on the right side of history. If your decision to withhold funding to the Arts Center is truly in the name of protecting children, then why are you neglecting public education? Your proposed twenty-two-four budget provides one point two million dollars less than originally promised. The former superintendent of Virginia Public Schools also had budgetary errors. She resigned as a result. Our schools were already tightening their belts for this shortfall totaling five hundred thousand. Why are you shorting the public schools more than double that? Which of you supervisors will take ownership of their mistake and also resign? I know I've seen Mr. Marshall and his wife at many school board meetings, so you should be well-versed in the challenges our schools face, especially in hiring and retaining quality educators. How do you think this budget shortfall will affect our teacher shortage? Please, show Orange County that you have the best interest of all in mind, not just your preferred demographic. Fully fund public programs that support the future of this town's large children. Show your willingness to move our community toward cultural progress. This board has shown is more than willing to move forward with projects such as Wilderness Crossing, which I'm sure in no way benefit any of you personally, even when the greater environmental impact and infrastructure stability have not been adequately addressed for this project. Is the board actually committed to the values it espouses to have? I know that my words tonight fall on many deaf ears hiding behind a big desk. So I'm truly speaking to our greater community. Wake up to the shamelessly self-interested decisions your elected officials are making. Do not support political puppets that care more for self-interest than the concerns of their constituents. Elections are rapidly approaching, and an overhaul of this board is needed to reflect the true composition of our community.
Next speaker is James Mannis.
Good evening. I'm Chair Johnson and members of the board supervisors. My name is James Mannis. I'm a resident of Spotsboro, Lainey County, and I'm here on behalf of Senator Bryce Reeves, who represents all of Orange County within the seventeenth Senatorial District of Virginia. I have brought a letter to you all, and I believe it's been distributed, of the time I started, apologies. I brought a letter that I believe has been distributed to you all, like Senator Reeves saw permanent that I reached a lot tonight. Dear Orange County Board of Supervisors members, on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, I took a meeting with Ed Harvey and Anna Pillow of the Arts Center in Orange at the request of Mr. Hunter Moore, a main benefactor of the Arts Center of Orange, Virginia. The center is housed by Mr. Moore's family with a gallery honoring their namesake. I was also there at the request of several prominent members of the community who are concerned about the recent exhibits or proposed exhibits that were encountered with community standards. I was there to address some of these concerns, to see if a resolution could take place. In my discussions with Mr. Harvey and Miss Pillow, it was clear to me that Mr. Harvey wished to put the issue behind them and find a way forward to regain the support of the board and the community. We had a lively discussion about the politicization and messaging of some of the exhibits and events, and whether or not it was appropriate based on the community's standards. I suggested to Mr. Harvey some steps he might want to take to build back the trust that was lost because of the situation. First, change the makeup of the board to reflect the general community as a whole serves more balance. Secondly, he needed to come to the board with a strategic plan and schedule to present to the board of supervisors of what they planned to exhibit. Lastly, stop using the Arts Center to push a political agenda. On April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, I was notified by a member of the community that a Facebook post existed online that suggested I was in agreement with the Arts Center concerning the matter currently before the board. I am not, and it is disingenuous to imply that I am. I notified Mr. Harvey, and he immediately took it down and apologized for putting the post up. I would like to remind the board that in nineteen seventy-three, the Supreme Court in Millervee, California, established the Miller Test, that in Chief Justice Berger's opinion, allowed a significant degree of latitude for the publication of erotic expression, but also acknowledged regional differences in public tastes and sensitivities. He sided with those who thought communities ought to be able to resist the approach of materials inconsistent with global values. He said that the First Amendment did not require the people of Maine or Mississippi to accept public conviction and conduct to intolerable in Las Vegas or New York City. Until the Arts Center complies with the community standards of Orange County, my recommendation is to stop funding the center until such a time as they stop pushing an agenda inconsistent with the Orange community's values. I see your views. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker is Patrick McElhenney.
I'm with one fifty-five West Main Street in Orange. First of all, thank you very much for your service to the county. Thank you. Mr. Prog. Since moving here two years ago, we have enjoyed many of the displays and programs at the Arts Center, and I understand that some programs are controversial. That is normal for the arts. So I'm going to keep it short and sweet and hope that you will store funding for the Arts Center. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Elaine Freeland.
Mister Chair and fellow members of the board, my name is Elaine Freeland. I live at one eighteen Washington Street. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to address one particular issue in the budget. First, I want to share something with you. This is work by one hundred three-year-old Irene Bryan, who is a resident of the Dogwood Village Long-Term Care Facility here in our community. Irene spends many hours each day in her wheelchair, quarreling over color combinations and then creating her works. With limited hearing, limited mobility, and diminished reading comprehension, her crayons and coloring sheets capture her attention and get her through each day. This also gets me through each day, for I call Irene Mother. Until she was ninety-two, Mother lived in Covington County, South Alabama, which has demographics similar to Orange County, rural with a population between thirty-five and forty thousand. Mother is a product of the Great Depression, becoming a young farmer's wife and a mother before it's end. From childhood into mature adulthood, there was little availability of basic art supplies, but she expressed creativity with her hand quilting and award-winning dressmaking. Mother was in her sixties when she began to explore creative opportunities, that is, other creative opportunities. This brings to mind the magnificent Arts Center of Orange. For twenty-six years, the center has reached the greater Orange community, serving as a special place through projects and programs by and for special people. The special people include all members of our community, whether they're artists, potential artists, or patrons, without favor. I can only imagine what an asset the center's community programs would have meant to Mother as a child and young adult when her financial resources were strapped, and later as a mature adult. Therefore, I respectfully request you include funding for the Arts Center in the county's twenty twenty-four budget. In so doing, you continue support started in two thousand twelve. Plus...
Ma'am, your time is up.
I'm sorry?
Your time is up.
Okay. Plus, you have the opportunity to double the county's investment in matching state plans. Thank you. Please consider the funding. Forty-five hundred dollars is not going to break our back. Also, thank you for participating, being a source for the Dogwood Village. It's a great asset.
I'm Kevin Henga at one forty-eight West Main Street. The reason I am here is to express my outrage at the actions of this body for their total defunding of the Arts Center in Orange. Furthermore, in prior sessions, this board voted to extend grant money back to the state with no reason given, although I don't know that it was openly discussed, I can guess what precipitated these actions, as now as they're discussed at length, and it was one specific planned event. I can argue about the merits of the planned event, but I won't, although I can say that the volume of signs for the event showed that it would have been well attended and therefore, obviously, something of interest for many members of the Orange County community. I'm not saying the planned event is for everyone. I understand that it is the responsibility of this board to determine how the tax dollars of Orange County residents are best spent, but does that also include this homogenous all-male board making judgments as to what constitutes art and is worthy of support? The Arts Center has so many community-wide programs that a huge number of people avail themselves of. Is it right for this board to decide that this one instance of art that they do not appreciate is worth trying to destroy the Arts Center by denying it funding that the county has provided for many years? There are items in this budget I do not agree with, but I also understand that the county does not fund programs that only I usually want, and I do not begrudge funding for items that other citizens want. But you are choosing to attack this statute of rights that has been appreciated and used by many of your citizens over many years because of one event that does not align with what you believe. I suspect a more accurate statement would be that it does not align with your politics and the current climate of anti-wokeness that seems to be infecting so many people. Thank you.
I'm Paul Moog at two nine one nine nine, Gordonville, Maine. I'm here to support your guys' decision to cut the funding to the Arts Center. It was a right decision. There's no right to have your Arts Center funded. Most people's hobbies don't get funded. My daughter's an artist, I suspect, by ninety grand sending her to art school, or friends who are all over the place, non-binary, mixed up, whatever. I'm cool with them. I'm very accepting of people and differences, but I don't think that drag event was appropriate. I think they're being disingenuous in their calling it an art event. I think they were very particular in their... I think they were very particular in their fifteen and up, because if you look at the state code, section eighteen point two dash three seven, they give these liberties to children. And I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but basically it's class five felony if they expose anybody under fifteen to what they were pretending to show. So they knew this was a looting violations act. They knew they were trying, they were trolling the community with this. This stuff is not known. It's all good and true. And you can see they're disrespectful people, the same crew. It seems like the art center is the coven of wokeness and ownership. They send the same group, the same group of people go to the anti-CRT events. So the art center seems to be just causing trouble with the community. And I'm going to point out this report here was that they're trying to censor posts on Facebook that are critical to the art center. So I do not think that they are very good spokesmen. They do not have an editor or a local paper. This is a very sick corporation that's just pushing wokeness. I also noticed that the local paper donated five hundred dollars to John F. Richards' campaign. It's very strange that a newspaper is donating money to a supervisor candidate. So I think that they really need to clean house. They're getting editor and start looking at their own actions. If they want to be reporters, be reporters, but don't try to censor people. And that also, I will point out, but I do agree with the, and I support anybody here. If one of them are dressed, one's changing their sex, or over team, whatever, more power to you. Do it. But don't push on kids. Don't tell them that drag performers are the greatest people in the world, we never will ask kids, because that's not true. There's, I've known a lot, I've known a lot of experiences with people who've had very much to do with a lot of criminality and their weird, and their weird perversions in wanting to dress in opposite sex clothing. They're not, they're not people who necessarily want to hurt children. But if they want to do it, that's cool. I just thank you for your decision and more power to you. And I say never fund them again. If they want, there's plenty of people who are as blind as you can fund the art center on their own. Thank you very much.
Good evening, board members. I've come before you tonight. I actually support your decision to pull the funding. However, I do think it is important to note, okay, that art does have great value in the community. But the type of art also matters. And when you think about basically the seven forms of art, you're talking about paintings, sculpture, literature, architecture, cinema, music. Right? And those type four values are important. They help children grow. They help them learn and develop out-of-the-box thinking. They help them problem-solve. They go ahead. All of these from multiple different angles. Okay? Quite honestly, by defunding, the art center might want to thank you. I think they've got over seven thousand dollars in donations since that happened, just because of the nationwide press. I'm sure that's helped out a lot. However, these types of funding events do help come about in our community with the elderly and others. Unfortunately, I'm inclined to agree that somewhat the art center has become a political hub point to push certain agendas. And those agendas aren't always appropriate for participants particularly under the age of eighteen. What could pen house or Playboy in a school library? It also shouldn't necessarily be exposing young children in that type of training. And that's what it was, said you, is under the guise of education, it was training how to do this. Okay? From that standpoint, I certainly support your decision because in large part, the majority of Orange County taxpayers contacted several of them and pushed the button on that and caused pressure, and it will continue to. I bet up, I am sure. And I believe you made the right decision in that funding. But I do believe there is a possibility for a way for the art center and the board to move forward dating the trust and reflecting positively on what the overall community of Orange County wants. Not just those totally infiltrated or involved with the art center directly next to it. Or specifically just in the town. I think it needs to incorporate in Orange County. And until that's worked out, I support not funding it. There's other art centers that could potentially get involved with to do that. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Regina Yerponis, and I actually live in Rixxville. Nine zero zero six, Rixxville Road in Rixxville, Culpeper County. I guess I'm here on behalf of the Blue Ridge Art League. We're a group that meets in Culpeper, but we have members from Fakir, Madison, Culpeper, and Rappahannock Counties. And we all come to Orange, to the art center. This is where we take classes. This is where we zip it, because it's the closest place for us. And we're a mixed group of people with all different views. You don't need me as the twentieth person here. You're intelligent people. You've gotten a feel of the room. I would just want to say that the whole time I've been sitting here, I keep thinking of my Aunt Helen. She was blind and lived on social security. But every time I came home from Chicago, she would slip me a ten. It might be in my birthday card. It might be rolled up in her hand, just handed to me. But it showed that she loved me. She cared about what I was doing. And she had just a fondness. I'm asking you to be that uncle. You know that the art center isn't going to collapse without your forty-five hundred dollars or without your nine thousand dollars. They will get more funded. But it's that feeling that you're behind them, that you know that they are doing good things. And as elected people, I believe that that's your job. Thank you very much.
Cameron Hamilton?
Good evening, all. Thank you for your time. I won't belabor you with too lengthy of a speech. I think that we've addressed some pretty hot topics here within the town and within the county in general. I think that there's a lot of concern and there's a lot of public and open debate. That's always a good thing, the diverse mindsets and opinions brought together to form a plan for the future. It is a community. It requires engagement. I grew up in Northern California. I live here in Rovia Road in Orange, Virginia. And we've come to love this town, love this community, love this county. Growing up in California, there's a pretty broad range of people that you become exposed to. I think I've seen virtually every flavor or color or creed you could imagine. I've also spent probably at least half of my adult life overseas in every single culture you can imagine, immersing myself on a grander level and even at the top level of view. So again, that public debate and that discussion is critically important. It's a shame that art has been turned into something that I think is really causing a lot of divide. I'm a huge supporter of the arts. I think virtually, I don't know that there's a single person here who's not. We all want vibrant and exuberant art displays. They promote creativity and they promote a lot of great characteristics of expression. Again, I myself, as a student, studied art. I hear stories that are compelling and that are really remarkable. I used to love to make clay pots and cups and all kinds of things that I found to be a really creative outlet for me as a young boy, trying to figure out what to do with my life before I decided to join the military. I just think it's unfortunate that such a creative and such a useful entity chose to bring something into their environment that was explicit and that frankly was not consistent with many of the ideals that citizens here feel. It's a shame. I do believe what Mr. Englund said, that there could be a path to remediation. I hope that is pursued. My recommendation to the board is that if funding is continually withheld, that some form of an MOU or an MOA be explicitly defined. I for one would advocate for continual funding of arts programs. But I don't know that anyone here would argue against, or if they did, you know, I don't know that there's a legitimate argument against generating such an MOU or an MOA explicitly requiring these spaces if receiving public funds, private funds are totally at their discretion, but if receiving public funds, that they ensure that certain parameters of behavior be adhered to. I don't think that's an illegitimate request. Again, I'm a father. I'm a husband. I'm a citizen of this county, and I consider myself a public servant. And I earnestly want you to consider the ramifications of your decision and communicate my support for the decisions that you've made thus far. So thank you for your time.
The speaker is Marshall McDaniel.
Mine doesn't have anything to do with the art center. I'm strictly black.
Don't love him.
I'm not a liberal, gay, old. Mr. Chairman, members of board, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My concern, like everybody is mine. We've discussed this. It's been hashed over since twenty seventeen. And that being, I'm here on behalf of Farrakhan, I say, I'm like, I'm tired of paying, and other people do not pay. Now, for those of you who are not familiar with this, just look out the window right over here. We have this wonderful airport. I'm certainly not against that at all. All I'm saying is, they should be paying too. And I don't know that any of you know this, but they have not paid any personal property tax on airplanes. Or there are RVs that I'm aware of that have been brought to anybody's attention since twenty seventeen. If any of you own RVs, any of you have cabin trailers, that you take the family on camping trips and so forth, I don't know about you, but I'm tired of paying, and other people might pay. My toys, I enjoy them. I don't mind paying, but that's their toys over there too. And they have hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of toys sitting over there, but they're not paying any personal property tax on. I'm not against airplane owners, not at all. All I'm saying is, what's after one, what's after the other? We had this conversation and I addressed the board back in twenty seventeen, I think it was, when this was enacted. Spoke my piece to no avail, but they need to be on the same treadmill that we're on. If you have a boat, you pay. If you have RVs, you pay. If you have motorhomes, you pay. If you have vehicles, you pay. You have airplanes, free ride. And I really think, according to the information that I've been able to look at, the hangar rentals and the tie-down spots, I'd love to be able to park my camper down there on that asphalt. You can throw a phone in if you want to. I mean, come on. Now, this has drawn up at one of the previous meetings, and it was kicked down the river. So one of the statements was, well, they fly, we took the tax off because they flew the airplanes out in December, then brought it back till January after the first of the year, and they didn't pay tax. And Mr. Crozier, that was a statement you made with Mr. Marshall in your book. I live near the airport, right up here on one one five six two Walker Road. I don't see this mass exodus in December and back in January. It does, I've lived here for twelve-five years. I don't see them. What I caution is, if that in theory is the case, I hope all of you people do not drive your vehicles to Culpeper in December. Even for a couple of days, come back after January one, you'll have to pay no tax. But that's not the case. We know that's not the case. Concerned, be in fact.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Kenneth Wyboll. I live at fourteen six oh one Grass Lane in Orange. Before I get started, I'd like to set the record straight, because I understand that our earlier contributors made an allegation against Supervisor Marshall and his behavior during this board meeting. I happened to be there at that instance to have the conversation with Mr. Marshall when a young lady got in between us and started asking a question, when she stopped our conversation and addressed that question and answered it, but she wasn't satisfied. Three times she asked the question, three times he answered it. At that point, he left. I thought he did it in a very courteous fashion. Now, I'm not here to disavow the many accomplishments of the Orange County Art Center in the past. However, we do not live in a rear-view mirror. In my view, the art center crossed the line, and there are consequences. The Orange County Art Center states on their Facebook page, they want to increase the quality of life in our community. Now, they state over the past twenty-five years, the mission of the art center to fit the narrative has remained the same for, to include and expand the appreciation for fine contemporary art and diverse styles and ideologies. The Orange City, Orange County Art Center has become the epicenter in arts for the current cultural debate. The art center is trying to change the standard America has used for centuries regarding socially acceptable behavior. This accent begins to approach with politically motivated activity. Can the art center continue its five oh one C three favorable tax status when it engages in efforts to socially, to change the socially accepted behavior in Orange County by pressuring the political leadership who is charged for protecting the rights of its citizens and the use of their tax dollars? Art in its broadest sense is a form of communication. It means whatever the artist intends to mean, art is an act of expression, feelings, thoughts, and observation. Art is generally thought of as an activity or product done by people with a communicative or aesthetic purpose, something that expresses an idea, emotion, or generally a worldview. I think we can all agree that nearly every child is familiar with, and might even have their own Facebook account. It is even possible that we as parents don't even know what they are viewing. And perhaps, since one of their classmates has suggested they look up the drag queen event, they did so. So what form of art is a drag queen event? Extending invitations to children aged fifteen or above to come and see how to make fingernails or apply facial makeup? What form of art is it when the host drag queen expouses lewd and obscene and pornographic messages on her personal Facebook page, which these children might be able to see? Penophilia is an appropriate description of its contents. What is obscene?
Nine times.
Oh, my God. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is Mike Allen. I'm actually from Green County. I am a candidate for the twenty-eighth district, State Senate seat. And I just recently concluded my career here in Orange as a teacher over at Gordon Harrell Elementary School. And it was clearly the, nearly the best eight years of my life. Fantastic. And the education that we gave the kids in that school was non-bore, truly. But it was also with a mindset on respecting childhood. The best gift you could give a child is a childhood, and you need to protect it. And when I saw, back in January, that this drag event was coming to the art center, it crushed me a bit, because it wasn't with a mindset on kids. Now, I was raised by an artist. My mom is ninety years old. She's an award-winning artist. She makes a fortune, actually, with her art. She does very well, even to this day. She competes. She's all mixed media. She's really broadened my horizons as her son. I don't have her ability. My kids somehow would skip the generation of my kids out, but I don't. But I don't. But I do have the appreciation for art. And I can't neglect the fact that people have expressed the three decades of the wonderful things that this Art Center has done. But once it bridged into this agenda, once they were bringing in the drag event, and once it was advertised for 15 and over, it was something that did not respect children or kids and or parents. And that was something that politicized the Art Center. So I agree with you, bullying funding. I agree that there should be some more restrictive parameters with regard to public funding of such a place. So I applaud what you did. And I look forward to a decision being made in the future that would allow for funding to be there for art, true art, and not for something that's going to indoctrinate kids. We have to be careful. We always have to be careful. We need to teach kids how to think and be skeptical, and not what to think. And when we push the what to think, it's when parents get that rigid backbone, and they get panicky, and they say, wait a minute, what the heck's going on? And that's when our schools lose their support. They lose their confidence. The parents lose their confidence in the schools and the community. Now, granted, some people do love that Art Center, and I hope it can return to what sounds like its former glory. But please don't ever have it have gone like that again, and please continue to pull funding if that were the case. So thank you so much for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I have no more secrets.
Okay, then, being that we're speakers, we will close the public hearing. Again, as I announced it, and you did from here, not that we will... We vote either on both the tax rates and the budget. It would be pretty light on the... As those who are in, if they're senior. Want to say aye?